Justice for all.
I thought I would give someone with just a little bit more juice the opportunity to come and lead us in prayer. Pastor Ashley, if you would.
You can do it here?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come today to say thank you. We thank you, oh God, for this opportunity to share and to be about the business of making this city the greatest city in this nation. Oh God, we ask that you would bless each and every participant, our president, the council, and all of the administrative individuals who do all that they do with a sincere heart and with integrity. Dear God, we ask that you would put a covering on this city. Bless our leadership, bless our mayor and our police and fire chief and all those who are in public office. Help us to realize at the end of the day, it is you that we have to answer to. Bless this community as a whole and keep us in your care. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
City Clerk Certified Publication on the Day Record on February 6th, Noticeary Pre-council on Regular City Council Meeting February 10th, 2015. Current copy of the open meetings act is posted on a white binder on the Eastfall legislative papers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Resolutions, preliminary plat and subdivision agreements, item number five. Resolution to revise preliminary plat entitled Prime Business Park Replat One Located Southwest of Old Highway 64 and West Maple Road along with attached conditions hereby accepted, and the preparation of the final plat is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number five is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Douglas Creason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicants. In your packet, you'll see there's five or six conditions that came with the preliminary plat. Those have all been satisfied. The sidewalks have been added, the NDEQ, the Douglas County Health Department, the NRD for the flood plain. All of those items have been addressed, so we're here to answer any questions and humbly request your approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Creason. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Item five is adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held February 17th, agenda items number six through seven shall be laid over three weeks to March 3rd, 2015. Liquor, item number eight. Tobacco Road Discount, 1414 South Saddle Creek Road, package liquor license application O location.
Public hearing on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
This is Michael Pulte, Attorney for SSB Brothers, 2712 South 87th Avenue. Here with Sanjay Shretha, who's one of the co-owners of the business, to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Eight is adopted seven to zero. Item number nine, Uncorked Paint and SIP Studio 12100 West Center Road, Suite 706. Request permission for a change in location of their present Class I liquor license to 13933 Gold Circle.
Public hearing on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Michelle Van Hooser with Uncorked Paint and SIP Studio.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 10, resolution that Big Red Keno is granted approval to operate a satellite at Smears Bowling Alley at 20902 Cumberland Drive, Douglas County.
Public hearing on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard. I have with me today Pat Kelly. He's the owner of Simpatz, and it's just an ownership change at this point.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Number 10 is adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an unpleasant on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed, as otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 11 through 18 were held on February 3rd.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
11 through 18 are passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items number 19 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item where you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question or two about Agenda Item 20, 21.
Marty Gray, Public Works.
Thank you, Marty. I just need some clarification because some people said there's some duplication of this with some private contractors. Could you just give me a little bit of a background on this particular resolution?
Sure. Specifically, item 21 that's before you today is a contract for services from Keep Omaha Beautiful Incorporated, who is a nonprofit organization who, for the past eight or so years, has helped us to satisfy the demands of the state-issued permit that's part of our stormwater requirement under the Clean Water Act. And yeah, I've kind of caught wind that there's some confusion about how this relates with the public participation process with our Combined Sewer Overflow Program, which is interrelated but pretty distinctly different. The CSO program is an infrastructure program wherein we're required to spend a whole bunch of money to build treatment facilities to reduce the discharge of pollutants to the Poughkeepsie River and the Missouri River. Contrastly, the contract with Keep Omaha Beautiful is to satisfy the requirements of our separate stormwater system, which is primarily west of 72nd Street. And the nature of that program under the federal requirements is that with that, it's more of a best management practice rather than to go out and build things. And so they're kind of different messages. So we have Lovegrin and Lovegrin Associates that help us engage the public to make sure that we've got public buy-in to the money that we spend on CSO. But on the stormwater side, we've got Keep Omaha Beautiful, who is able to leverage a lot of volunteer time to help clean up parks and waterways and mark storm drains and things like that. So it's my contention that the investment in the agreement with Keep Omaha Beautiful is very appropriate, and it's actually cost-saving. We could go out to the private sector and hire somebody to do the same thing. But I think with working with this nonprofit in this communication sort of program, that it's really the best use of our ratepayer dollars. And the only other thing I would throw in is that the dollars that are going towards this contract with Keep Omaha Beautiful are dollars that are generated from fees. It's not general fund dollars. So those fees amount to about 71 cents a month per resident, and part of that accumulation of fees goes to satisfy this contract.
Thank you, Marty. And I do want to, for those people, if they would read the attachments, there are about nine steps that this nonprofit needs to go through. And if you take a look at them, the evaluation of each step is pretty thorough. I mean, I'm really impressed on how they're going to give feedback for what they are trying to accomplish. I mean, it's pretty well outlined, and they're going to turn that information into us. So it looks like this amount of money is being held to a high standard. I want to thank you for those clarifications.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I was notified of the passing of a dear friend, Ray Britsky. In his 80-plus years on this earth, he was constantly an advocate for keeping neighborhoods clean and doing his part. His little patch of the world was very well manicured. So my support today is going to be in memory of my friend Ray.
Thank you. Public hearings are closed. I also want to recognize Patrick Kavanaugh, who's here in the audience, who I think in a matter of seconds here will be the next member of the Benson Business Improvement District. We appreciate his willingness to serve, and he's right across the block from, I think, the next major development in Benson. So with that, was there a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
19 to 27 are adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading of public hearing, agenda items number 30 through 34 shall be held on March 3rd. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading of public hearing, agenda items 28 shall be held on February 24th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading on agenda item 29 shall be held on February 24th. Public hearing on these items today. 29 is ordered to accept a bid of Keystone Turbine Services for overhaul of one helicopter engine for the Omaha Police Department Air Support Unit.
Public hearing on number 29 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading of public hearing, agenda items 30 through 34 shall be held on March 3rd. Additional resolutions, item 35, resolution to appointment of Michael Markey as a at-large representative on the Public Arts Commission is hereby confirmed.
Public hearing on number 35 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
35 is adopted seven to zero. 36, resolution to nomination of James Cusick as a member of the Park and Recreation Board is hereby confirmed.
Public hearing on number 36 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
36 is adopted seven to zero. Chairman of Board of Equalization, 37, Chairman of the Board of Equalization reports approval of the plans of assessments with adjustments and corrections made at the regular meeting held on February 3rd.
Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
On the supplement, item of additional resolutions, item 39, resolution that the purchase of an inflatable shelter and accessories for the Omaha Metropolitan Medical Response System and its partner agencies is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 39 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
39 is adopted seven to zero. Item number 40, resolution that the agreement with Omaha by design to provide services to the residents and citizens of the city of Omaha relating to the urban design and vacant land utilization is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 40 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Second, roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
40 is adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the second reading in public hearing, agenda item 41 shall be held on February 24th. Now you want to go into executive session?
Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes. The city council will now adjourn into executive session, where we will only discuss labor negotiations.
Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second?
Wrong call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Three ten.